Call the meeting to order, Mr. Cook specifically. I'm telling you that. So today we have a special tree. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And then we're going to... Should I go through the rest of the agenda first, Leslie?
Yeah, I guess that's fine. Do the call to order and then do them.
Okay. And then I'm going to call up the students from... who represent the Charlottesville High School portion of Voices of Virginia. They were just recently in Paris and Besan, singing with the students from St. Anne's and Albemarle High School. And these are our students who made that journey. And we're very grateful to have them tonight. And they're going to sing a few songs for us today. Mr. Cook?
Thank you very much, Ms. McKeever, for your introduction. Yes, this is the... God, I'm loud. I'm sorry. I don't need that. Behind me is almost everybody. We had a few that are working and a few that are in shows that are making the hills come alive with music up at Wintergreen and Sound of Music. So, but this is most everybody that represent Charlottesville High School and our sister city of Besan. It was a wonderful experience, a wonderful exchange. And so we just want to share a couple pieces with you. Thank you so much.
Speak into mic even though you're off.
I can't remember what I just said. We're going to sing for y'all right now. Then these are a couple of songs we did in France.
(Singing) I went to my river, but my river was struck. And I tore some to a darkened sky. Tell me where it's home, where do the waters lie? I do not know, I shall be free. Come and stand in that river. Cool and gentle and slow. Send your troubles down water, down on that water floor. When you stand in that river, angels sing in your head. Secrets beyond every worry, dreams beyond every fear. Tell me, sister, brother, where does that river flow? It flows down to the great water, where soon my people will go. Come and stand in that river. Cool and gentle and slow. Send your troubles down water, down on that water floor. When you stand in that river, angels sing in your head. Secrets beyond every worry, dreams beyond every fear. Tell me, sister, tell me, brother, where does that river flow? It flows down to the great water, where soon my people will go. Oh, the night, the day, as it's gone down the stream. Some days, there's so much here. Some days, sometimes life is hard. Come and stand in that river. Cool and gentle and slow. Send your troubles down water, down on that water floor. Stand in that river. Cool and gentle and slow. Send your troubles down water, down on that water floor.
I guess that's a reminder. So when things get tough, float it on down the river. It makes you feel better. And a little something, Dennis Up, Unc clouded Day.
(Singing) Oh, they tell me of a home far beyond the skies. They tell me of a home far away. And they tell me of a home where no storm clouds rise. Oh, they tell me, they tell me of an unclouded day. Oh, the land of cloudless, cloudless skies, of an unclouded sky. Oh, they tell me of a home where no storm clouds rise. Oh, they tell me, they tell me of an unclouded day.
They tell me of a home.
They tell me of a home. They tell me of a home where my tents are torn. They tell me of a dead morrow's day, where the tree of life gives out all blue. Shout its prayers, pray with me, unclouded day. Oh, the land of cloudless skies, of cloudless skies, of an unclouded sky. Oh, they tell me of a home where no storm clouds rise. Oh, they tell me, they tell me of an unclouded day.
They tell me of a king in his golden beard.
They tell me of a king in his golden beard. They tell me of a king in his golden beard. Sing the song that is made of gold. Oh, the land of cloudless skies, of cloudless skies, of an unclouded sky. Oh, they tell me of a home where no storm clouds rise. Oh, they tell me, they tell me of an unclouded day. Oh, the land of cloudless skies, of cloudless skies, of an unclouded sky. Oh, they tell me of a home where no storm clouds rise. Oh, they tell me of an unclouded day.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time. So I'm going to call the meeting to order again and say that today is September 5th. And let's see, move on to the next thing on the agenda, which is the moment of silence. We'll have a quick moment of silence. Thank you very much. And then we're going to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, we have the roll.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have the roll.
Great.
So I just wanted to add that a board member, Sherri Kraft, she is not here. She had minor surgery, but she is following us on live streaming. So she wanted to let us know. Hello, Sherri.
So the next item on our agenda is members of... I'm sorry. Comments from members of the public? Oh, I'm sorry. Approval of the proposed agenda.
A move for approval?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And now, comments from members of the community. Do I have anybody listed, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Gudrun Campbell.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Ms. Gudrun Campbell.
Ms. Gudrun Campbell. Hi, welcome. Thank you for coming. You have three minutes. Please state your name and your address and we'll start now.
My name is Gudrun Campbell. I live on Fairway Avenue. Hello, school board members and Superintendent Atkins. My name is Gudrun Campbell. I'm 12 years old and I'm a 7th grader at Beaufort Middle School. I live on Fairway Avenue. Last year, I was inspired by the movement started by a 16-year-old named Greta Thunberg and began to organize school strikes here in Charlottesville. Over 200 people came out for the first strike. It showed me that Charlottesville is filled with people who care about the climate crisis. For the next strike, we invited City Council candidates Michael Payne and Seena McGee and House of Delegates candidate Sally Hudson to speak just ahead of the primary election. Now, Greta Thunberg has called on us, the youth, and you, the adults, to join together and demand a response to the climate emergency. She said, "Starting on Friday, September 20th, we will kickstart a week of climate action with a worldwide strike for the climate. We're asking adults to step up alongside us. There are many different plans underway in different parts of the world for adults to join together and step up and out of your comfort zone for our climate. Let's all join together with your neighbors, coworkers, friends, family, and go out onto the street to make your voices heard and make this a turning point in our history. In conjunction with the global movement, I'm organizing a strike on Friday, September 20th from noon to 1:00 p.m. at the Free Speech Wall downtown. I'd like it if the Charlottesville City Council... if the Charlottesville City Schools could support our movement. Tomorrow, I'll reach out to you by email to see if we can work together. I hope that we can collaborate and ensure that the Charlottesville Youth Climate Strike is as impactful as possible. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Are there any other people who signed up to speak?
No, that was it.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to the special recognitions. The first one will be Mr. Henderson, Jobs for Virginia Graduates. Good evening.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Atkins. Tonight, I would like to introduce Deb Tewksbury, who's a CTE teacher at Charlottesville High School, and she will introduce our guest.
Hi, Ms. Tewksbury.
Hello, members of the board. Dr. Atkins, thank you for setting aside time for this. I'm going to introduce you to you Barry Glenn. He's the chair... president and CEO of Jobs for Virginia Graduates, and he has been for 23... 23 years. And his job and all of us specialists in Virginia, our job is to help students, especially those who've got a lot of barriers to success, to graduate and then have positive outcomes afterward. So Barry Glenn.
Thanks, girl.
Good evening.
Dr. Atkins and board, it's a pleasure to once again come to Charlottesville. I put in your place our connection. And on page eight, there's a brief... something that Deb wrote about one thing the class did. But the enclosure there is what I want to spend just a minute talking about. Jobs for Virginia Graduates. I'm in my 24th year heading up this organization in Virginia. It is the best thing I've done in 47 years of education. And because of teachers like Deb Tewksbury, we have great success and leadership from board. I want to thank you for supporting our program. I know it's a financial commitment, it's a time commitment, and it's been a wonderful program here. So the handout I have shows your performance for the last five years as relates to the national averages and the Virginia averages. But the box on the right talks about the barriers that our kids entered in the class of 2018. Remember, it takes another year to get our statistics because we follow these kids every month for a whole year. We're the only program in the country that after graduation, we make sure every month that they're still doing okay. It's not enough to get them out of high school. You've got to be sure they're headed in the right direction. That's what we do, and that's the strength. But you can see the average barrier is 9.43. And we don't even think about some of these barriers, how impactful they are. If you look at the bottom of that first list, 100% graduation. 100%. And despite their barriers, socioeconomic and academic, your school exceeded all five barriers again. They outperformed the state average in positive outcomes, full-time placement rate, and graduation rate. Exceeded the state. So I want to congratulate Charlottesville High School, Deb Tewksbury, and the students in her class. I'd like to present this plaque. You have a bunch of these now. I don't know where they're hanging, but I'm going to... No, I want... We usually hang them up in a row. And if Deb could join us, can someone take a picture so they know? Oh, there you are. I also have a printed one for the classroom. And y'all seen this before. We give this to the classroom too, so the class of 2018 can come back and sign it. Because the whole idea is to let those students that went through it come back and sign it again and show some continuity there and give them hints about where they're working, how they got the job. Because basically, we're school to graduation to work, whatever that entails. So let's go out here and pretend we know what we're doing. Oh. Where's our picture? What are you doing? I appreciate you having me tonight. You'll have a great meeting and a great school year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Hopefully, we'll see you next year.
And thank you, Ms. Tewksbury.
And Ms. Tewksbury, appreciate your dedication as well to our students. And then, Dr. Atkins, we have a proclamation today.
Yes, ma'am.
You would like to tell us about?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, we have a proclamation to recognize the anniversary of the school desegregation in Charlottesville City Schools. It's to recognize and to honor the students and specifically the Charlottesville 12 students. So I'd like an opportunity to read that proclamation to the board. Proclamation honoring the 60th anniversary of school desegregation in the Charlottesville City Schools, whereby 65 years ago, on May 17, 1954, the United States Supreme Court ruled against segregated schools in the United States with the landmark Brown versus Board of Education decision. And whereas, the Commonwealth of Virginia implemented a strategy of massive resistance to public schools' integration between 1954 and 1959. And whereas, in 1955, the parents of African-American students in Charlottesville petitioned the school system to allow their children to attend their neighborhood schools and were denied. And whereas, on August 6, 1956, the U.S. District Court Judge John Paul ruled in Allen versus Board... our school board of the city of Charlottesville that the school system must integrate Lane High School and Venable Elementary School. And whereas, on September 19, 1958, in an effort to prevent desegregation of the Charlottesville school system, the governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia ordered the closing of Lane and Venable. And whereas, Lane and Venable were shut down for the period of five months, and the Charlottesville school system remained segregated for the remainder of that year. And whereas, on September 5, 1959, Judge Paul ordered the immediate transfer of 12 African-American students, three to Lane High School and nine to Venable Elementary School. And whereas, 60 years ago, on September 8, 1959, 12 African-American students bravely integrated the Charlottesville City School System. Whereas, the struggle for equality in the Charlottesville Public School System and our city forever affected those involved. Now, there it be resolved that we, the members of the Charlottesville City School Board, praise the fearlessness displayed by the families of the 12 students and those in our community who supported desegregation of our school system and believe that as we continue to address equality for all students, we remember this story on this day and hereby proclaim September 8, 2019, as Charlottesville 12 Day. Madam Chair, I present this resolution to you and the school board for action.
Okay. Thank you. That's a very strong proclamation. And it sounds like we would like to vote in order to have... to resolve that this is the day, September 8.
We approve the resolution as presented.
Please speak into the microphone.
I move that we approve the resolution as stated.
I second.
Great. A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I'm just glad that we're able to do this while many of the Charlottesville 12 are here to rec... to be recognized and that we... and that they're still really contributing to the community. You know, 60 years later, it's really powerful. I just recall last year when they presented the scholarship to the young lady that's going to George Mason. I mean, they're still kind of contributing in a very tangible way to further education for all students. So I'm glad that we could... that we could do this. So thank you, Dr. Atkins and staff.
Well said, Mr. Wade. Certainly speak for me when you say that. And anybody else have any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the proclamation? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So be it resolved.
Yeah, comment?
Of course.
Madam Chair and school board members, I don't know that we could say thank you enough to the Charlottesville 12 for their bravery and for all that they endured during that time and to have persevered to not only complete high school and to endure the treatment that they received, but to go on and to be productive citizens, not only in our community, but well beyond of a Commonwealth of Virginia. So to the 12 and to the families, the parents and the families of the 12 who had to watch their students endure such treatment, we cannot say thank you enough. And thank you to our community for continuing to keep this at the forefront. May we never forget from where we have come, how far we have come in our educational system. And we still have a long way to go, so we can't get tired until we get all the way to the end. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins, for that important reminder. So moving on to the next item, we're going to go to board member comments. I will start with Mr. Micky.
I don't have any at this time.
Mr. Bryant?
None at this time.
Ms. Peria?
I don't want to disappoint, so I'll do mine now. Thank you for the resolution. And thank you to Ned for sharing his father with us and helping us do many things, not only for our school division, but for our Commonwealth. And it always does me proud when we go to Richmond for various things, and everybody remembers your father and respects your father. And I'm glad to say I served on the board with his son.
Thank you very much.
A lot of things that we do on the board are often considered routine. However, I was able to throw in a few little fun things last month. I attended the Inside Out reception on August 6, honoring those who in our community worked behind the scenes to make Charlottesville a better place. I was humbled and shocked when I found out I was one of the Inside Out crew. Dr. Richardson was also appreciative of our presentation that we did on August 5, and he thanked me on August 6 at the reception for our presentation. That Thursday, not to be undaunted, I, along with Dr. Atkins and Juan, were at our Community Table 2.1. As you know, Community Table is an effort through the United Way to help bridge the gaps of equity and bring our community, not only community members, but stakeholders together to talk about very crucial and important topics. On Saturday, August 10, I allowed Dr. Atkins and our board member, Mr. Bryant, to strongly encourage me to participate in the Charlottesville Sing Out, another activity to help bring our community together. And yes, I had a blast. It was nice for me to dust off my vocal pipes for another time. On August 13, I attended our K-Tech meeting and was genuinely impressed by our very own Stephanie Carter as she gave her 90-day presentation. She's off and running, and kudos to Ms. Carter and all of us in our city schools as well because we are definitely on the move. I had the honor and esteemed privilege of welcoming all of our instructors and staff members to our CCS convocation. I was humbled when I looked out and saw everyone fired up and ready to go. Next to being on the stage with Stevie Wonder and his backup band, I must say, Dr. Atkins, bringing greetings to convocation is right up there. During our last several weeks of school, I've really been impressed in seeing our students walking to school, catching our buses, waving to our bus drivers, and looking at our enthusiastic crossing guards. Everyone trying to keep everyone safe and making sure that we can go about our day doing what we do best, educating our children. Yesterday, PEF had their bimonthly... well, every other month meeting. How's that go? And our STEAM camp once again was a hit. And Dr. Larry Richardson and I are looking forward to the third one. We also discussed our exciting 5K Walk One, which is going to be held on November 2, and everyone will be getting information shortly.
Thank you, Ms. Peria. Mr. Wade?
Thank you. Just have a couple of comments to make. One, I was able to visit some of the schools during the first week. Clark and Burley Moran, so that was always fun. And Leah mentioned that went... had a K-Tech meeting. And also, I just wanted to remind the parents about the various...
One, I was able to visit some of the schools during the first week, Clark and Burley Moran. So that was always fun. And Leah mentioned that went, had a K-Tech Meeting. And also, I just wanted to remind the parents about the various scholarship opportunities. Just a little bit more, I'm a little bit more in tune to that because I have a senior daughter and looking to pay for college. But at the beginning of the school year, Dr., I sent out information of, a link about various scholarships and they broke it down to when they're due by month and specific information on who in the school can access, where you can go to that information. It's very valuable information. I've been sharing it with as many people that I know about it to pay for college and we have Scholarship Night here on September 15. Many of us went to one last night in Monticello High School. So there's a lot of opportunities to learn about schools and events. A couple of other events I want to tell you about, on September 25, the Charlottesville Orchestra is having their kickoff for their fundraising for their trip next year to Spain.
And Portugal.
And Portugal. And Jeanette, I see you here at the Harvest of the, Harvest Festival is October the 5th, 4th. And I wasn't sure if we're going to meet before then, but I wanted to get that out. This is a fantastic event that if we, as many people come out for that as possible. It's at Beaufort School and we'll be putting out more on that, but I just want to get it on your calendar, October the 4th. So, thank you.
Ms. Torres?
Um, thank you. Let's see. So, some of the things that I've done in the last month, I've attended a couple of Housing Advisory Committee Meetings. Also, I'm on a subcommittee that deals with allocations. So we spent a lot of hours looking at allocating the affordable housing funds. So that's been enlightening as always, an important, important work here in the city. I also had the opportunity, and I know there's another tour tomorrow, but to attend one of the Confederate Monument Tours. And I attended that, and it's probably the fourth one I've attended, with Dr. Douglas and Dr. Schmidt, but it's a wonderful opportunity for the community to learn a little bit about local history. Starts at Court Square and there's another tour that will happen tomorrow. And I believe that's at 6 o'clock and I think Mr. Wade's planning to be there. But it's important and I bring it up because I also wanted to just do a shout-out to Dr. Atkins, who was asked by the Governor and was appointed to be on a commission that's going to be working to rewrite and look at our history standards. And also, I believe they'll be working on creating curriculum and standards for an African-American history class. So, was just thrilled to know that Dr. Atkins was one of the appointees. And again, Charlottesville being such a rich area and so much history here locally, that that tour is a wonderful opportunity and Dr. Douglas and Dr. Schmidt have a lot to offer, so I encourage everybody to take advantage of that if they can. I was also able to attend a few of our schools before school started to greet some of the teachers, some of our fellows, the African-American Teaching Fellows, so was able to spend a little bit of time at Beaufort, some time here at Charlottesville High School, Greenbrier. Also attended Convocation. And then with Mr. Wade, I attended, there was a college fair at Monticello High School last night that the entire community was invited to, but we also have one and I believe it's been put out via email and newsletters here at the high school on September 15. There's the Scholarship Workshop that happens, I believe, from 4 to 5, but then there is also a college fair. So it's a great opportunity to bring, you know, your students or not, but to just go and talk with a lot of in-state and out-of-state colleges that are here and providing information. And I also have a senior and she's kind of been on the fence about four-year colleges, but let me tell you, she was so excited walking out of there last night and I've got my work cut out for me. So it's pretty exciting, so, and that's it for now. Thank you.
I have one, one other quick announcement to make. We were just talking about the Charlottesville 12. I forgot to mention that in conjunction with Charlottesville City Schools, the Office of Human Rights and City School Yard Garden, we, at Beaufort School, on September the 28th, we're having, from 11 to 1, we're having a celebration. The students have made a, like a sculpture of a sundial, each and each of the dolls representing one of the Charlottesville 12. And so, that's September the 28th, from 11 to 1, at Beaufort Middle School, it's going to be out in the garden there. So, and if you haven't been to the garden, it's just really a wonderful place. It's a soothing place, but it's functional. And I think this is a wonderful way to commemorate Charlottesville 12 in addition to the other things that we're doing. It's another way that, you know, as the students were pulling it together that, you know, they were hearing the stories of the Charlottesville 12 as well, so I just wanted to add that on as well.
Pretty nice.
I also wanted to add, Ms. Torres, about Ms. Bryant, our former student School Board Rep has also been appointed to the Governor's Commission, which I think is a super important voice as well. So I'm really excited for the partnership for Dr. Atkins and Ms. Bryant and that commission.
She's the Advisory Committee to the Governor.
Oh, there's a separate, there's a different committee, but.
It is, it's to the Governor.
She was, so, our student School Board Reps really go on to do amazing things and so I'm excited about that, even if it's a different board than yours, commission than yours. So, moving on our agenda, I think we are up to adoption of the Consent Agenda.
I move for approval of the Consent Agenda.
Any second? Okay. I just wanted to mention like what these grant awards are. I just think we, it's, these are on our agenda. It just means that we've been, you know, the school division has been given these grants and I think they're really important and some, you know, because we're not discussing them, they're not going to be on, you know, people might not know about them, but we definitely have the Extended Learning Startup Grant. We have a WALK Grant, there's a program for WALK. We get some community funding for that. And then the Learning Ally for Struggling Readers Grant, which I just thank you to the community and these, it's not insignificant amounts of support from these local and other revenue grants.
Question?
Yes, Ms. Torres?
I just had a quick question, if you don't mind, about the Learning Ally Grant. Did not know if Dr. King or somebody could speak specifically to, okay, just how that money, that grant is being used programmatically or what types of interventions that'll be used for? If you know that.
So, that is a relatively new award that came to us. If you remember the reading for the blind and dyslexic group, that company has morphed into this entity and it's basically, the, the specific use of it, that'll be determined by the SED Department. I don't know that that has been ironed out completely, but as soon as I stepped to the podium, I forgot her name. There's a SED Coordinator in that department who, Rachel Rastnik, who is, knows how to measure students deficits with reading and will help determine where and how the monies are used based on her experience because she's a certified person to determine eligibility to access this program under AIM, which is another way that students access this program. But this will allow us to extend access to it beyond the students who qualify to use it under AIM Virginia. Is that what it's called?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to all need to speak louder into the mics. Thank you, that's all I got. Okay, so, I'm going to call for the vote for this Consent Agenda. Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. So, Dr. King, I would love it if you could introduce to us our student representatives to the School Board for this school year.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members and Dr. Atkins. At this time, I'm actually going to invite Dr. Eric Irazaria, our Charlottesville High School Principal, to explain the process used to select our student representatives to the board and introduce them to you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Irazaria? Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. We're excited. We have a great group of student reps. The process, students do apply, it's open to all of our students. Once those applications come in, we have a review panel that reviews the applications and the candidates then move forward to a panel, a mixed panel of our SCA reps, student reps, teachers, admin, and Mr. Wade served the School Board to select our finalists. And we've got a great group. So I'd like to introduce them if that's all right with you all.
Please do, yes. I'd be delighted to learn more.
I'll tie it down like The Price is Right, but come on up here, you don't have to walk so far. So our first, our first School Board Rep and which will be, and he'll be serving tonight is Adrian Anderson. He is, yeah, go ahead.
Come on down. You're the first one for this prize.
Adrian is a senior, plays varsity lacrosse, member of the Black Student Union, the Latin Club, and is in Engineering Four as well. So, and fun fact, he is my, my six-year-old's favorite Wegmans employee. So no matter how long Adrian's line is, we have to wait in that line to check out. So I do appreciate his patience with my six-year-old. So, Adrian, thank you.
Welcome, Adrian.
Tiara Straight is also a senior. She's in the National Honor Society, junior volunteer at the Mother Jefferson Hospital, School Counseling Advisory Council, Claiborne Better Future Fellow, Youth Group Leader, and she works also, she works at Food Line. So, Tiara Straight.
Welcome. So you'll be doing the second quarter or second?
January, February.
Tribe?
Yep. She's the second round. And then Ashen Cherix is also a senior. She's played field hockey here at Charlottesville High School. She has three jobs. She's a member of Y Street and also is a new member of our College Ambassador Program. If you've seen the news on that, that's part of our ESL Program as well to build. So, she is here as well. So she will be serving as our third Board Rep in the spring.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you and welcome, y'all. Thank you, Dr. I.
Thank you so much.
We need to approve.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we can have a picture.
Okay. Yeah. We've sent it to him. He has it.
Should I go stand up? I just want to clarify, we probably do need to approve this, the, it says info and action, so I just wanted to clarify. I'll take a motion to accept the recommendations of the panel for the student School Board Representatives.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just, I just want to say that.
I haven't closed the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I was going to say things as well, but feel free, Mr. Wade.
No, I just wanted to say that the interview panel consisted of some administrators, but the students as well. And it was some wonderful students that, you know, that submitted applications for this and it was a difficult decision to do and in kind of a way that's a good problem to have, but I'm looking forward to, from the input from the students, so, thank you.
Yes, we rely heavily on our student School Board Representatives and we really appreciate your willingness to serve. So, thank you. The next item on our agenda is, are the Advisory Committees to the School Board. Dr. King is going to tell us about that.
Absolutely. So tonight, I am presenting for your review, our proposed membership list for our Special Education Advisory Committee, as well as our School Health Advisory Board, Gifted Education Advisory Committee, and our Parent Advisory for Title I. And so therefore, at this time, I'm going to ask if it could be an item for your, items for your discussion.
Okay, great. So I guess I just have a question about the SHAB, the School Health Advisory. There seems to be very, very, very few parents on that board and I just want, perhaps I need a reminder of what the, what it says about who should be on the SHAB. Because it would be helpful, I think, to have a few more parents if they're willing to serve or able to serve. There's a.
We can definitely go back and make that request. That's not a problem.
I mean, does anybody else have any thoughts on the matter? I just.
No, I mean, I didn't, I saw it, I didn't, you know, really look at the detail to see, you know, as a parent or staff or professional, so.
There's one parent. And one school rep, student rep, which I always appreciate, but I just think it's, and I know all of these professionals are dealing with students all the time, so I don't mean to suggest that parents don't have, are the only ones who can serve, obviously, but it would be very helpful, I think, to have one or two more parents. So to the extent that that's possible.
Seems like we've had some people come talk to us in the last.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah.
Such issues.
So maybe we could request we have two more parent volunteers as SHAB members, to the extent that's possible?
Absolutely.
Great. Also noted that there was at least one parent on the SEAC who was listed twice, I believe. So I just wanted to clarify if that was the same person. I know that the, for my, in my opinion, again, parent input is so vital and so that's why I just want to make sure that if there is one parent, that they represent one school and that another parent be able to represent the other school. So, is my, so that one parent is representing necessarily two schools, that's a lot, I believe, to kind of shoulder and also to get kind of a more broad opinions or thoughts by if another parent is available. That's my take on that. Any other? Is that true that there's the same person as that Walker and?
I will, I will follow up. I believe that was the intention, but we would definitely, we're still seeking another Jackson Villa parent, so we are going to continue looking for, it's been the beginning of the school year as well, but definitely following up on it.
And I would like to just, I think that at one of our meetings recently, Dr. Kraft and I switched so that I am no longer the representative to Quest, but Dr. Kraft is and I will be the alternate, is my understanding from a lot of our last retreat, like on July 1st, that was going to be the way it was supposed to move forward.
Ask Sherry. No. No.
1-800, call Sherry.
Well, until such time.
Yeah, I think so, but, you know.
Can we just, yeah, well, I think what I would like to do is put this on next month's agenda and because there's not very many parents on like, for example, the Title I Committee and then these changes, so maybe we can just make these changes and then come back instead of doing the action today.
Absolutely.
Does anybody else have any issues with that or thoughts?
So, I mean.
Does she need it before then?
Yeah.
That's the question.
There have been times that the Committee's been presented to you as information, changes were needed and you said, "We're going to vote on it knowing that the changes will be taken care of" and other times where we have split it September and October.
What is your preference?
The preference of the Board.
Oh, she's good.
Good answer. Good answer, yeah.
So, so.
For their empowered to meet between now and.
I, that is my understanding, they're empowered to meet, like, all of, yes. They're empowered to meet in the meantime.
Absolutely.
Right. These are.
Yeah. So I will be prepared to vote next month, but, you know, if they can't, you know, get parents, we just don't want them to get them because we asked for them, but we really want parents. I still want us to vote on it, even though they will still be efforting getting parents if they're not able to.
Of course. That's, I mean, it's a relatively common concern, especially on the Special Advisory Committee. Okay, great. So we'll go ahead and hold this over until next month.
Okay.
And we can probably just put it on the Consent Agenda with, if the changes are, oh, anyway, we can talk about that later.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. King. Are you up again? No. Extended Bridges to Literacy is up next with Mr. Henderson.
Again, good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Atkins. Tonight, Jennifer Davis, Coordinator of Literacy, will give you an update on the EBL program.
Hi, Ms. Hi, how are you? Good to see you, Ms. Davis.
Hi, everyone. Good to see everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Atkins. Thank you for having me tonight and allowing me to come and share some of what we are doing currently in EBL, how we did last year, and then also what we're planning on doing this year. So I'm going to go ahead and begin by sort of showing, okay, Leslie said timeout. Yes, that's all right. So I'll go ahead and just share out that we, last year began the program. Again, we worked with K through four, and last year we shared out that we would be no longer serving Walker because of the reasons that they had a lot of edge club kind of conflicts and after-school conflicts. And we felt that we would have a better return, pretty much, if we worked with K through four. So we did that this year, and as Leslie's beginning to bring this up, it added about 22 additional weeks to the instruction at four and a half hours per week for each student. It ended up coming out to around 16 and a half days that were added to the calendar for these students then in terms of instruction. We had 36 employees. That included IAs, nurses, and teachers in K through four. And we did first grade through fourth grade from the beginning of the school year in September until the end of March. But we also added kindergarten in sort of as a pilot to try that, to see how that worked in a classroom, to see how our kids performed about mid-year. So they started in January. I think that's the first one. There we go. So our attendance data, I just wanted to share that with you so that you could see. We continue to have high attendance for EBL all throughout the year, you know, even with sicknesses. I think we saw a bigger dip last year or the year before in terms of our attendance. But we hovered around division-wide about 88% of the time our kids were attending EBL, which was great. I think we had some built-in incentives too. We recognized when they had perfect attendance. We gave them pencils. We gave them certificates. And most importantly, they got their name announced on the announcements too. Moving on to the first piece of the data, I just wanted to highlight a couple of different things that came from this. This is the PALS data from the end of the year compared to the beginning of the year. And some of the things that you'll notice is that done by subgroups, there were substantial gains across all races and different groups. You will also notice too that, that there are significant ones. That's because the PALS in kindergarten has a tendency to have a large number of items, but still overall to see those types of gains are pretty substantial. I will share with you that we had five students that did not meet the fall, the fall PALS benchmark in kindergarten out of the 10 that were enrolled. And by the end, we had all, we had eight that passed that PALS in the spring, but did not, we had two that did not make it. Of those two students that did not make it, they still had significant gains, and I just want to share that with you. They, one went from a 25 in terms of the score to a 69. Another student went from a 25 to a 72. So as a former kindergarten teacher, to see those types of gains are quite admirable. So.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So this kindergarten data, for, for example, on the first slide, so the attendance data from EBL starts in September. So it's just confusing to me because we didn't have EBL for kindergartners September through December. So I, so those numbers, so it kind of confused me.
Right. So because we give the PALS in the fall and in the spring, mid-year is optional. It's not techni, well, it's optional. We give certain ones, but that one is, does not necessarily have a benchmark that's associated with it. So that's why we chose to look at the fall versus the spring with that. But that's something that we could look at and address this upcoming year as we look at the data in kindergarten.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. On the next one, we talk, we show a little bit about first grade. Again, across all groups, we had some really great gains. What was interesting about this is last year when I shared this data out with you all, we actually had lower gains because of the fact that what I did was I looked at the sum score in the fall, which also included the letter sounds component, which sort of elevated some of the scores. And so when you looked at the spring, it's almost like comparing apples with oranges. And you just can't see the true growth because you're comparing three tasks versus two tasks in the subtasks. So what I did this time around was I looked simply at the two tasks that would be also looked at, the PALS WRI and also the spelling score. And I looked at the one in the fall with the benchmarks, came up with a sum score just on those. And I also looked at the spring. And it was a very interesting sort of trend that I saw. One of the things that I saw was something that I'm going to be actually speaking with our kindergarten first-grade teachers regarding. And that is, is that we do a great job of teaching our children letters and sounds and being able to identify that and produce that. But sometimes kids get bogged down and have a difficult time transferring that knowledge into encoding and decoding. And that shows up sometimes with this. And I'll give you a perfect example of this. When you include the letter sounds as the fall benchmark, we actually had 23 students meet it, meet the benchmark that were in EBL. When you factor that letter sounds piece out, we actually had five that met that benchmark, which was really eye-opening. What it tells me is that we grabbed the right kids. We're working with the right students. And what was very interesting is at the end of the spring, when we tested again, 29 of those students now met the fall benchmark based on those two pieces. And that's up 24 from the beginning. So that was really great. I was very excited about that. We also had some substantial gains as well. We had a couple of students that went from a 12 to a 31 and from a 12 to a 32. And the benchmark was around 35. So very, very close in terms of making that. Second grade data, real quickly. I'll try to just kind of talk a little bit about this. Again, substantial gains and all comparable across all grade levels, I mean, all groups. We had 11 students that met the benchmark in the spring that did not meet it in the fall. And we had six students that showed up within four points of meeting the PALS fall, uh, spring benchmark at the end. So very close. We're making good progress. Some of the admirable gains, I think, that I want to note is we had one student that went from a zero to a 64, which is really incredible. We had another one that went from a 16 to a 60, and another that went from a 19 to a 60. And the benchmark was a 54 on that assessment. Next on third grade, again, what happens is as time goes on in the third grade and the fourth grade test, a lot of times there are less numbers of points and gaining in terms of like improvement. So that's why you'll see lower numbers. But again, we're seeing some pretty good gains across all. I will share with you that we had six students that met this benchmark in the spring. And we had four students that were within that four points, again, of a 64. In terms of notable gains throughout the year, we had students go from a 42 to a 64, 41 to a 67, and a 40 to a 71, which is a really huge jump for kids. Finally, taking a look at the fourth grade data in terms of SOLs. We had 19 students at the end of the school year that passed the SOL in reading. We had one that passed advanced. For those that did not pass, we had six that came within that 375 to 399. So still coming fairly close, and we'll continue to monitor that.
Can I just clarify?
Sure.
I mean, this, you're throwing a lot of numbers out.
I am.
And it's, and of course, it's all fascinating to me.
Yes.
But, so just with respect to third grade, what you're talking about are the 33, I mean, I'm sorry, the fourth grade SOL data that you're talking about.
Yes, correct.
Are the 33 students that were assessed, that's on slot, this slide?
Yes, those were the 33 students that were assessed.
And we're looking at two, we're looking at the 2018 SOL versus the 2019,
how those students performed and the gains over time between those two years.
Okay, so, and so we, and then you told us that, how many students passed and passed advanced in?
We had one that passed advanced, but we had 19 students that passed overall.
Okay, and the, and then six of them were 375 to 399?
Correct, yes.
And so, great. Continue on. I just wanted to clarify.
Sure, absolutely. And if I ever go too fast, please stop and ask me the question. That's fine. I do want to share a couple of other gains that we had that even though the students didn't quite make where we wanted them to be, they still had growth. And I think it's important to recognize that their score on the third grade is based off of the third grade standards, and their score in the fourth grade is at a much higher level too. So not only are they sort of mastering this third, but they're beginning to move ahead to the fourth as well. One gain that we had was from a 296 to actually 340. So that's a pretty big gain. We had another student that went from a 383 to a 414. And we had a student that went from a 469 passing to a 527, which is pass advanced.
So is there similar data for like, I mean, for the third grade SOL?
So last year we shared the third grade SOL data, and I would be happy to kind of put that together if you all would like me to do that. One of the things with the SOL data is that the way that the state asks us to do it is as a pre and post. And because we don't have that pre-data, it's difficult to do a comparison, but I'm happy to do that. I just thought last year it kind of created a little bit of confusion because there was no pre-data.
Makes sense.
Okay. So in terms of reflections and adjustments for the program this upcoming year, we know that research has shown over time that our greatest gains in terms of literacy development and really kind of bridging sort of, or changing sort of the literacy trajectory of students really occurs with K through two. And so we're really kind of going to put a lot of our effort into those grades this year as we go forward and working on with those three grades in particular, and really just trying to make a very strategic plan for how we go about teaching them literacy in the afternoon. We're going to continue to measure the subgroup, the subgroup growth within that. We'll be looking at PALS. We'll be looking at Ames Web Fluency. And we also will be looking at MAP in second grade this upcoming year as well.
What type of fluency did you say?
Ames Web Fluency. So it's a universal screener, and it's basically like a one-minute timed assessment. And it's nationally normed, so we can see where kids would fall out in terms of percentiles, and we can measure their growth that way.
I've heard that before.
Yeah. So one thing that we are really changing this year about the way we do EBL is one of the things that I've spoken to you all for the last several years about is that our teachers love the Making Meaning Program and the vocabulary component. And there's a read aloud component that goes along with it. They just find those students are really getting excited about trying out new words. And we know that that's one of our deficits sometimes with some of our students that are struggling. So we're going to continue that piece for about 20 minutes within the lesson plan. We also are putting in a piece that we've gotten really great feedback in, in pre-K. And that is using a resource that's called Hagerty's Phonological Awareness. We know that a lot of our students that come in may have gaps in their phonological awareness, blending, rhyming, segmenting, syllabication. And so this is just a really structured way of doing it each day. And we found that already, even in pre-K, our kids are starting to pick up and do things that we never thought, you know, they would, might be able to do. They're blending and segmenting three weeks into school, four weeks into school. It's pretty notable. So we're very excited about that. So that will become part of EBL. And then for the final piece, we'll have the small group guided reading piece. And we're looking at, again, incorporating instructional text with our students so they're getting the opportunity to read and write about topics and standards that are happy in the regular classroom as well. And finally, the last piece that I'm going to mention is that, something that I think worked really well, and the ladies behind me will be able to kind of reflect on this maybe too. But one of the things that we did last year was try to look at how we could really get kids excited and motivated, since that's one of our goals in the program, to read not only in school but outside of school. And we were able to, every month, provide a book that the students would select themselves out of the Scholastic, you know, catalog. And they would choose a book, and they would get that book every month from October till March. So it was super exciting, and they thought, you know, it was like Christmas all over again. They were very excited. So they loved that piece. We also did magazines that they were able to self-select too. Again, what I know is that kids get very motivated when they're motivated by what they're reading. So we had a lot of boys that loved to get Sports Illustrated, but we had a lot of girls that did too. We had cricket. We had lots of different opportunities for kids to select what they wanted to read. And those became part of their personal libraries at home. So that was a very exciting part.
Ms. Davis, can I ask before we bring up the other teachers?
Sure.
Because this, the fourth grade numbers are interesting to me.
Yes.
And it seems, I mean, if I, you know, we're talking about basically 18, I, if I give you the 30, the 375 and above in terms of SOL score.
Yes.
Out of, that's about 18 out of 33 have, you know, a 375 or above on their SOL.
Correct.
What are we gonna, what are we doing for the remainder of those children as they move into Walker? And as, and, and like, how are we, you know, what are we doing to real, you know, because that's only 54% and that's.
Right.
Very, like 16 extra days of school, basically, for those children. What are we doing for those kids?
So I think what we're doing right now with those kids that are moving currently into Walker is that we've become really strategic with how we're teaching those standards and making sure that our teachers are teaching the standards and really looking at the curriculum framework and making sure that they're adhering to that, and that our assessments align in that same way. The other thing that I will share too is I think the communication coming from fourth grade, coming up to fifth grade this year, has been really good. I know that our reading specialists in particular put together, and actually I think Paula Culver Dickinson actually helped with that piece too, to collapse all the data from our fourth grade so that Walker had a very clear indication of where our kids were beginning, where they were starting, and what programs they were currently working in, or where, what their ability level was at that point in time. So I know there's been, I think, this year, a lot more communication, but it will be something that we'll continue to monitor over time, especially because we want all those students to become successful. And those are the things that I know that Dr. Hastings and the Walker crew are really working hard on.
And those, for example, those 33 children who were in fourth grade, presumably they were in third grade too. They were in the third grade cohort of EBL as well.
Potentially, yes, but sometimes we do have students that move in and out of that. So.
Not children who necessarily were being, were not, were struggling.
Correct.
Struggling, they wouldn't necessarily move out of that.
Right. Or we may have a student that for whatever reason, they're excelling in third grade or doing fairly well. And for whatever reason, maybe it starts to plummet. Again, part of EBL was trying to build the confidence of students and making sure that they were feeling comfortable reading. We certainly want their instructional levels to increase as well, but most importantly too, we want them to love reading as well. So that was another goal of the program too.
Of course. Great. So, yeah, bring on.
Anyone? Okay. So I have two people that are super special to me when it comes to the EBL program. I have Patrice Harris, who was a teacher with EBL at Greenbrier. And also I have Carol Bushing, who was a teacher with EBL pretty much from the beginning, who's done fourth grade as well. So I just ask that they come and just share a couple of like brief thoughts and reflections as teachers of EBL on what it's like to teach and what the students benefit from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, come on down. You guys are next.
Just real briefly, for me, so I've taught the fourth grade group. It's the tangibles and the intangibles, which you all don't get to see. You don't get, you don't get the fun part of education. That the tangible, that's those small targeted groups where we could focus on vocabulary, background knowledge, and really deep analysis of text and have them get really excited about it. And then the intangible, having students see themselves as readers and as writers, and more importantly, successful, just successful every single day. We definitely got there. Actually, last year, we kept EBL going the whole year. My group wanted to keep going, so we just kept going after EBL was over. You know, they talked about how it felt like a little family. I think anytime you can bring kids together in a small group and target the instruction, they set their own goals based on MAP. They saw themselves reaching those goals. So I think, you know, it was a really good experience for them. I have three little things to show you. The first, while, while we as educators were looking at the assessments and analyzing them, we realized that main idea and summaries continued to be low, a low area of achievement. So the after-school group that I worked with, they chose books, and then we did 30-second book talks. The idea being that if you only have 30 seconds, you're going to get to the main idea pretty fast. So I have one to show you.
Oh, good.
What, what do I do here? Just play it? Me, you?
Leslie got it.
Okay. So this is Adoni. He's in fifth grade now. Oh, it's back. Those are, yeah. May, maybe. Well, that is Adoni. And he does a really great job with that 30-second book talk. So we're going to maybe skip Adoni for a, oh.
Oh, there it is.
There we go. There he is. There's the play button.
Thank you, Adrian. Our student, school board reps.
Yeah. That's gone again. All right, well, okay, so, so that's, oh, oh, we're going to keep, okay. No, you let me know. You let me know. So they wrote, they wrote the scripts. They practiced them. I told them they didn't have to memorize them, but they memorized them. And they were very excited. And then we sent them out to the entire school, and the school played them during morning meeting. So everybody got to see them. I should have just brought Adoni, and he could have done his 30-second book talk.
Click at the bottom. Well, good job, Adoni. We really are proud of your progress.
So I can just go ahead and talk about these. That's okay. Oh, no, it's okay. I know. You, you, I, you, you want to feel that success. I understand that. So then, these, we had, this group was really interested in analyzing poetry. So we analyzed The New Colossus and then I Too by Langston Hughes. And then the students really were getting into some ideas of social justice and how they felt that they were being treated, and some bias that they felt that they were experiencing in school. So we, I decided this was as good a time as any to get down and dirty and talk about it. So that's what we did. And then I said, would you all be interested in writing about it? And they were, clearly, so these are just two, Yusuf and Sanaya. So you can read them. I am by Yusuf Asif. I am a boy that is also a twin but also a hard worker. I am a student, twin, brother, athlete, soccer, football, board games. The best about me is my love for my family. I am more than just the color of my skin. Don't judge me on where I came from. Instead, judge me on my compassion. I am smart, and you can't change who I am. And, and then Sanaya wrote, I am a girl who is nice to others all the time, but also hard-working student. I'm a daughter, sister, cousin, student, athlete, niece, dancer, basketball, baseball, soccer player, and gymnast. The best thing about me is my creativity. I am more than what's on the outside. Don't judge me on my size. Instead, judge me on my talent. I am who I want to be. And they were so proud of those, and
As well they should be.
Yeah, and I was proud of them. And, and so that's, those aren't in the numbers, and the numbers data is absolutely important, and we have to be able to prove that what we're doing is working. But I think this shows it too. And I'm actually sad we're not doing fourth grade because I was enjoying it so much, but I'll, I'll look forward to doing second.
Is that what you're doing this year?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, so, all right, thank you.
Well, appreciate your hard work, and your commitment to the kids are, our students are, is evident, and thank you for bringing those three examples to us.
Yeah, I actually have more. I'll send you more. But yeah, I saved them all.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Harris?
I have a comment.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Bushing, what I really like about that second student is I am who I want to be.
That's right.
That's a powerful statement for a student of her age to make.
And she was. And, and it was wonderful to see, they came in with a pretty severe dislike of reading, and writing was like, bleh. And by the end, they wanted to write those. You know, they, they want, they invited people into them, they wanted, I printed them out on nice paper to bring to their parents. It was a, they were so proud of themselves. It was so beautiful to see just that, I mean, you can see just that confidence and, and in their words, really amazing.
Great.
It was lovely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Harris.
Hello. Good evening, Dr. Atkins and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to stand before you and speak about my joy with EBL. I absolutely love it. I love working with my families, I love building relationships with the children. On Tuesday, I received an email from a family that I worked with last year. Did it receive funding? She loved it so much, she wants to be a part of it this year. The excitement that the children have for reading at the beginning of the year, it's sort of like pulling teeth. It's time to read, it's time to write, but by the end of the year, Ms. Harris, will you check out more books for me? Ask Mrs. Davis if we can get more books to take home? So it's a very enjoying, rewarding experience. The families love it, the children enjoy it, and I just want to say thank you.
Ms. Harris, thank you so much for coming and your commitment to our students.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
So I'm going to go
Hold on.
Sure.
Mr. Mickey?
Yes. The last piece, I'm hoping it's going to play. This is just for my final shareout, and maybe I could answer some questions, and then we'll kind of leave on this like high note, if that sounds great, okay?
So it looks like there are
You have to speak into the mic.
160. Yeah, it's not.
No. Keep, keep speaking.
It looks like there are 167 students, and that's across all the elementary schools. Does this go on in all the elementary schools?
Yes. Last year, it happened to each of the elementary schools. I will share with you that we didn't have teachers in certain grade levels, like that maxed out. Generally, we'd ask for two at each grade level. This year, we are actually doing quite well with our hiring process, and there are only a couple of positions that we need to fill at this point in time.
So how does it work at each school? How many different EBL classes are there?
So this year, last year with the data, we had essentially, there were two classes per grade level that were allocated for it. That's how this year it will be. So we'll have four classes total in grades one and two up through about December, and then we'll add in another two kindergarten classrooms after that. So a total of six at each of the elementary schools.
So does, it sounds like not every elementary school has a class at each grade, is that true?
That is correct. So last year, we did have, in a couple of buildings, just a difficulty, and I think I've, you know, I've spoken a little bit about this in the year before, but that sometimes, you know, with all the demands on teacher schedules and family time, it sometimes makes it a little bit harder for them to stay after school and to teach an additional hour or two. So that was a prohib, definitely a prohibitive type of thing for us. But this year, we actually are reaching out, we've, we're putting out just sort of an all-call for EBL teachers, but the good news is that most have been hired at this point, and we start on September the 16th, and I'm working with HR right now to fill those other four vacancies.
So is the design then at each elementary school to have one of each grade, a class for each grade?
We would really like to have at least two, and then we can
Two for each grade?
Yes, and that would be, yes, and generally what we do, so there would be two in first, two in second grade, and then obviously two in our kindergarten. So the way that the grant is written is that we go through the research, which is anything five or six to one typically has the same advantages instructionally as teaching one-to-one, so we try to stay within that ratio. So generally about 12 per grade level.
And are we, I guess there are different parameters that we're choosing kids from, is that right?
That is correct. So the way that this works is that in previous years, we would actually select our students at the, the very first year, we selected them at the end of the year. And what happened is that we had a lot of revisions at the beginning of the year because we would have transfers, or we would have students that would, you know, move out of the district, or we'd have other kids that we felt needed the support a little bit more than someone else. So we do leave that decision up to each of the schools, and what we're looking for is a student that really, really might need that motivation, they may need the confidence in their reading, but most importantly, we want to increase their levels as well. So they're generally the students that are sort of right on the cusp of, we want to make sure that they're successful at the end of the year. But again, it kind of comes down to the teams, and we leave that up to the grade level teams and the admin at each school to make the determination at a PLC of who they're going to invite to EBL for this upcoming year.
I can't remember how it's set up, but it seems like there's tier one, tier two, tier three, or whatever, and that this is not aimed at the lowest tier of readers, is that right?
A lot of times, yes. It's going to be kind of devoted towards your tier-two readers, students that just need a little bit of something more, just a little more confidence, a little bit more practice reading each day. But we do have some students that are tier-three, that for whatever reason just need, you know, that extra help too. So it just depends
My curiosity is why it's not tier-one? Why are we not giving tier-one, if they're the most struggling students, why aren't we giving it?
Well, our tier-one is typically the students that are doing okay on the curriculum, and our tier, when we begin to add
Tier-three is the lowest level?
Our tier-three would be the ones that need a much more intensive intervention or intense intervention, and our tier-two are sort of in the middle, just need a little bit more help or a little bit more support.
So then my question is, I wonder why we don't target all tier-three, for instance?
Right. Well, we did, we have looked at that before, and in the first year, we targeted, we sort of looked at, at PALS. And what happens is sometimes you might have a very wide range, which makes it very difficult when you're sitting down at the small group to really kind of make sure that you're kind of having this very cohesive instruction for all students at that, at the table too. So we have worked with a variety of different students too, but I understand your question as well.
It sounds like though, based on what your, the pre and post numbers, many of those students are in fact quite
Tier-three.
Struggling.
Correct. I mean, to have a zero on a PALS is, yes, typically tier-three. So again, it just kind of varies at each of the schools.
Mm-hmm.
I think what we have to look at is that we have a high number of ESL kids who are naive in reading English.
Right.
And so putting them in EBL is not a good start for them
Right.
Because it's going to create
Because they don't know English.
Right. Failure. So it's looking at the students who are tier-two, tier-three, looking at where they are and taking them from there. So well, there is a number of kids in tier-three that could be, have special ed needs that we don't, with the ESL, EBL teachers don't have the expertise, and then we also have ESL. We do have special ed students in EBL, and we have some ESL, depending on what level of ESL it is. Also, what determines the population that we have is the number of teachers that we can serve the kids. And so every school at every grade has a maximum of 24 working, two teachers, actually, it's 12 is the maximum, one teacher, two teachers per grade level, 12 students. And so, and some schools might have less than 12, and some have more than 12. And we try to, especially with the tier-two kids, to try to accelerate, have them come out and bring the other kids in. So there is a flexible scheduling of that as well. But there's a, a number of ESL kids that we would, it would be inappropriate to serve in
Sure. Yeah, makes sense. Are we, I mean, it sounds like we've had some staffing issues and that sort of thing, but are we, if, if we set it up two per grade per school, are we meeting the need that's out there? I mean, do we need to expand the program?
I would love to expand the program, to be honest. I mean, I think if we could get more people involved, and I, I love the program, I mean, I think the teachers speak so highly of it, and I just, yeah, I would love to expand the program. It's just finding the human resources to staff it, I think that sometimes does make it a little bit more difficult.
It's, it sounds like by and large, the kids are okay with it. That was a worry when we set up the program, that suddenly they got to go do more schooling.
Right. And it's interesting because it's been quite the opposite. I mean, like Carol was sharing, her kids didn't want to leave last year, and she's like, hey, is it okay if I go ahead and keep up with my EBL group? I'm like, okay, that's fine. So I think it's very exciting that we have a lot of students that want to participate and don't see it as a burden. They see it as something awesome and fun, and that's a real tribute to our teachers that are teaching it. The fact that these children want to come and build this relationship with a teacher and read and, and write, and I think that's just, it's wonderful to see that.
So you said that last year it was, K students came in halfway through the year, and you probably said it, but what's going on this year? Are we doing?
It will do this, we're doing the exact same thing, but this year, we're actually extending the window a little bit more. So last year, we were, we built in some breaks for teachers because that was one of the pieces of feedback that we heard about EBL, was that sometimes it just, it felt really long, working so long. So Dr. Atkins was really gracious and said, you know, let's build some breaks in here for our teachers, and so they can have some extra time, just, you know, very natural breaks, like Thanksgiving. We add the two days on there, we give them a break at the wintertime for winter assessments and all that. Oops, sorry. So that typically does happen, but I think that in kindergarten this year, we're actually going to start in December, and our calendar is going until the end of April, April 22nd. So we'll have an additional about three weeks to the calendar, so I'm excited. And we saw great gains in kindergarten, and the kindergartners loved it.
Tagging on to Ms. McKeever's question, is it common for kids at this point to be going year to year to, to EBL?
Not necessarily. I mean, there, there are some students that I think just really enjoy it, and they love coming back for EBL, but typically, when I go over the rosters, there are several different students that are brand-new to it because their needs have changed over times. And obviously, like, the ultimate goal is that we would love to, even though we love having them in EBL, we love it when we see my coding, this green that they're exiting out because their performance is so high. So we do see that throughout the year too. So sometimes that will change the, the variance of the cohorts.
When we were first setting this up, we talked about essentially making it mandatory, and I don't gather that we've ever done that, but I wonder if we're getting the kids that we want, that are there a lot of kids or parents that are turning the program down and we wish they wouldn't?
I have had in four years, I've only had maybe three or four parents out of all the elementary schools refuse, and typically, it might be because they're getting tutoring after school, or there's another reason behind that. But generally, I've really only have one parent refusal over the course of four years. So our parents are behind it, they're very supportive of it as well.
Great. On the, on the
Yes, Mr. Mickey.
Everybody else had their turn.
Did they?
There, on the, on the scoring on the, on the PALS, it's very impressive gains. It seems like it is common that all students have gains. I mean, if you looked at students that weren't in the EBL class, you would also see gains typically. Is that not true?
You will see gains over time, but to see those gains across all the subgroups and at such a large rate, I think is definitely a tribute. It's hard, again, to really siphon off which is the EBL influence and what's the tier-one influence. I think it's a combination, but I think it really stands as a tribute to what our EBL teachers are doing, that they are matching what's happening in the classroom in terms of standards and working on those standards to basically benefit, benefit those students as well.
Well, I wonder if maybe there aren't comparable cohorts to compare, but it seems like it would be valuable in assessing the program to look at some kids who weren't in EBL but were at the same PALS level going in and see where they are at the end of the year versus the, the kids that were in EBL.
Absolutely, and we can certainly look at that. We'll have plenty of data at the end of this year, so that's a great idea. Thank you.
And finally, you heard me say it. It sounds like this is still outside the budget, it's still grant, grant-funded, is that right?
That is correct. So right now, this year, we actually work off of the local composite index. After year four, or actually, at year four, we began to sort of shift off the funding a little bit, so now it's, it's based on the LCI. So there's a little bit more of our share coming into it, but it is still grant-funding that's coming through.
Mr. Mickey, I'd like to add to
Yes.
What Jen has said, we, each year, we have contributed percentage-wise, a larger percentage of the cost.
It's been going up.
So that the allocation from the state has been decreasing and our allocation and our contribution has been increasing. and our contribution has been increasing. So, this year, we received $96,000 from the state around that amount. And then we have a significant amount that we add to that.
And I will share too, that I've been super frugal with some of the funding because with personnel costs, that's a huge chunk of that.
Sure.
Um, in this past year, it was like, wow, we have some money to spend. And that was part of the reason why I began to do, work, look at the personal libraries in order to really kind of use some of that, that grant funding, um, to build those libraries up too. Um, but we're very grateful for the grant funding. It's been wonderful.
Well, thank you all so much for your work. This is a program I've been very excited about and advocated for. So, I'm glad to hear it seems to be doing well.
Thank you so much. Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Uh, yes. Uh, I just, I'm curious and, and, uh, I've, over the last year or so, I've been learning a lot about ACE, the Adverse Childhood Experience and Trauma Informed Care and things like that. And I'm just wondering, and I know that, that this is just a small part of the, of the child's day, but does that factor in, um, I guess generally, how does it factor in how we teach the child, you know, not only during EBL but rest of the, the day?
That sounds like a really big question.
That's a huge one. Um, we, we have quite a bit going on with our social emotional learning in schools. Uh, and we'd love to give you more information on, on how those ACES impact our students and also how we're working with our students in the classrooms and in intervention in order to make sure they're in a position to access the curriculum.
And that's, this, this is something for me. So, if you can email that to me.
Be happy to.
I guess all board members as well, but I don't, you know.
Yes.
We can talk about it at a future agenda meeting. I think the public would be really interested to know our social emotional learning.
Oh, sure.
You know.
But that's, no.
No, you may. I said, I said, come on down.
Well, good, here's good.
No, then they can't hear you on TV and.
Okay. All right, here, it's good. But that, that is a big part of it, I think. I think that's why they love it. It's a small group and we, you know, we, we have a snack together and we read together and we share our day. I mean, sometimes the kids would come down upset about something that happened during the day. I'm like, well, we can't get work done until we're all feeling good again. So, let's write about that instead. Goodbye lesson plan. We're gonna write about this instead, which is actually how those poems came about. It was them processing what they felt to be some bias that was coming at them. And so, I think that this program actually, anytime you can get kids into small groups and give them your undivided attention, I think does that. But I do think that, that this program helps with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, does any, any other board members have any questions for Ms. Davis? I have one question, but go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, first off, thank you.
Thank you.
As always, for this presentation and Ms. Bushing. Ms. Harris, thank you very much for coming and sharing. And, um, I do want to acknowledge also, as I know all of us do, really do appreciate and, and hear that it's more time after your already long day. So, very much appreciate all of the, the staff and the teachers that are stepping up to be part of this. Um, and, and I too. I mean, I, I can totally sense what that must feel like to be a part of that small group and to feel safe in that and how important it is just, um, not necessarily to master those standards, but to, like you shared, to be a successful reader and to have that confidence. And that's lifelong, right, and not just an SOL score. So, I appreciate, um, the division, just offering the opportunities, um, to help those kids get to that space. So, thank you for that. Um, so, I just, a couple of things. I'm looking at, at some of the numbers over the last three years. And so, I've heard a couple of things. So, the first year that I saw data in 2017, we had 270 students.
Yes.
And I'm assuming that included the Walker Group.
That's correct, yes.
For some of that. And then it's, it's decreased. Um, and so, I understand that. But have you had the opportunity to look at that or have any thoughts about why those numbers are decreasing?
I think the numbers primarily are because of the staffing and being, it's not that we can't necessarily like serve the students because we, I mean, that's, well, that's part of it actually, is that we don't have necessarily the human resources to be able to do that. And so, this year, we are stepping out and hiring externally, um, instead of always internally. And so, we're posting that so that we can have those positions filled and we can serve as many students as we possibly can.
Okay. And then I was just curious too. I know on a prior presentation, you had listed and broken it down, uh, Tier One, Two, Three, and the different interventions that you offer at those levels. And I was just curious, I'd love to see those interventions again, just listed at some point.
Oh, sure.
But was wondering also if you found that certain interventions, um, are working and certain ones aren't, you know, and if you kind of mix and match that a bit.
Right, absolutely. I can certainly bring some of that data, perhaps when I do my literacy presentation, um, that looks at those tiers. That's typically when I present out the tier, different tiers and where the children are. Um, but we've had some really good success with Wilson Reading, Wilson Foundations. We have had a lot of people go on board with that. Um, they've loved that as one of our Tier Three interventions. We also have been using Level Literacy Intervention, which is Afondson-Pennell, which mocks basically what children are doing in guided reading as well, um, in their Tier One. So, it kind of models that, whereas Wilson is, sort of takes a different approach. So, we've had good, some good success with those.
Okay. I'd appreciate seeing that.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Any other board members have any questions for Ms. Davis?
Okay. I have a question about, um, the emphasis on K-12. I mean, I'm sorry, K-2.
Yes.
What does that mean for Three and Four specifically?
So, specifically for Three and Four, we actually are working very strategically with our teachers right now to give them really strong professional learning that's based on those standards too. And there's also interventions that are happening throughout the day, but there are also some interventions that are happening after school that are more school-based rather than EBL.
Cause that's a little concerning to me that we're not having addition, those same resources devoted to the third and fourth grade that we have had in the past, given what you talked about in terms of small targeted intervention, um, and having cohesive instruction in this small group. So, when you have a teacher who has on a, um, you know, has already like very significant differentiation and different needs in the classroom, it's very concerning to me that we are not having the similar programming year after year, um, for these, this cohort. Um, can you clarify a little bit more what, what the decision-making process is there and what's the school-based versus EBL? I don't, I don't really understand the distinction.
There's a lot of variables. And so, let me try to.
I gather that.
Slowly go, go through this. One is having the teachers in the classroom to do EBL. We've been doing this four years and it's extremely difficult to make sure that we have enough staffing to do EBL. Um, and when we started, it was basically one through five. So, we had a number of schools that, um, instead of having 10 teachers, well, in this case, four, eight teachers, we might've started off with four or five teachers. And so, um, we were struggling in that piece. And that's even trying to get teachers from that building and then asking teachers outside of their school to come and work at a, a school that they're not familiar with. Number two, um, in looking at the research, we know that the biggest gains are gonna be in grades K-1 and Two. And that we know that if we can get all of our students becoming good readers by first grade, then we solve the issues at Two, Three, Four, Five, and furthermore. So, we made a decision, um, after looking at the funding, looking at human resources, and looking at what research is telling us, we decided to put our emphasis on grades K-1, Two, knowing that if we can give those kids more time, more explicit instruction, um, that we might be able to help accelerate. Because you gotta remember, a year growth is a lot of work that goes on just to do one year's growth. What we're doing is trying to accelerate learning because we have many kids who come to us in kindergarten who are not on grade level. If you look at the number of preschool kids that we serve in our four-year-old program, those kids are being served because in many cases, poverty is a part of the, of their barrier and they're not on grade level. So, we've got to accelerate. And so, the easiest way and the most effective and efficient way to accelerate is grades K-1 and Two. So, we're putting our emphasis on that. Now, does that mean that we turn a blind eye to Third, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth? No. So, right now, we're strategically, strategically looking at schedules, looking at lesson planning, and making sure that we have the appropriate, um, time we're using to not only intervene, not waiting till April to intervene, but intervene in September and, and October and November. And looking at the schedule, how do we work with those students in Third and Fourth Grade that might still be missing some important, um, experiences to help them become good readers? So, there are many variables to go into, into a, a child learning to read. We're putting our resources in grades K-1, Two. We think we can make the biggest impact. And then working with schools for our Third and Fourth. And then also with, with Five through Eight, we're, um, putting emphasis on there. One thing we have done, One through, Through Six, is to implement a writing program and getting our kids to write more efficiently and effectively and productively. And so, um, that, we're now into our third year, third year for some, second year for, for many schools. And we're beginning to see a change, um, of writing helping to achieve, to increase reading achievement. So, those are some things that we're looking at. But it's, um, trying to take the funding and, and what we have and trying to be very efficient and trying to accelerate. This is about accelerating, um, achievement, not just keeping status quo.
Ms. McKeever also, it, and, um, Mr. Henderson is talking about putting the EBL dollars in K-1 and Two. We also have intervention dollars that all of the grade levels have. Um, and we have those and intervention that's going on during the daytime and intervention that's going on in the afternoons also.
I would just like to know what the intervention is happening after school. It can be, I mean, that's, you mentioned, we have EBL and we have after-school intervention. What is the after-school intervention?
We'll be more than happy to bring you a report of all of the intervention that's happening at all of our schools.
Mostly, I'm worried about those, that Third Grade Cohort that is going into Fourth Grade. Actually, I have, I have two worries. I mean, I'm worried about all the kids, but the, the Third Grade Cohort that's going to be taking the Fourth Grade SOL next year. I want, I, I just, but I think it's important to kind of look at that cohort from year to year. And I'm interested in how those children perform after a year of not having the EBL. Uh, in, because here we're talking about very significant growth. You mentioned them very successful, targeted, getting them excited about reading. And here we, you know, are taking it away from them. And I just, I did worry about that, A. B, um, the Second Grade Cohort that's going into Third Grade and gonna be taking the SOL for the first time. They're going from a classroom where there's an IA and additional resources for Second Graders and that they have, they just have the one classroom teacher in Third Grade and now they're not having an, at EBL. So, my concern is, I, is, my understanding is not, I just don't really have a clear understanding of what's happening with the budget around EBL. And then what is happening around interventions for children who are having literacy concerns. And, you know, since we've had this data from year to year for several years now, it's been really helpful. And now, I'm concerned that we're gonna lose that kind of foundation of knowledge by taking the EBL experience away from that cohort.
I definitely hear what you're saying, certainly. And I'd be happy to talk with the schools as well in terms of what they're providing with their school-based as well. But I also, um, will echo your concern just in terms of, I hear you. Um, and I certainly will, um, make sure that I have on my radar this year, those Second and Third Graders that are going into the, up, the new grade level to make sure that they are, um, accelerating as well and have conversations with the reading specialists and the other team members at the schools to make sure that they're doing well.
I appreciate that. And I really have heard so many wonderful things. Obviously, I, I sing the praises of EBL. I really do agree with the small targeted groups. And again, the 16 extra days really does speak for itself. The successes are there. And even if it's, they're not passing the test, the growth is there and the learning is there. Um, and, but, uh, you know, so to take it away is just like making me a little nervous. Um, so, I would love to, I appreciate your, you know, focusing on that. And, and I would love to hear more about the interventions we're giving to those students.
I'd be happy to do that.
So, Jennifer, if I understand what you're saying is that we started a program at the early ages because we think that's most important. You're saying that we're not providing it when they're about to take the, the test at, um, the SOL.
No, that's what we have been giving, we've been, we've been serving K through Four.
Right.
Um, well, we were serving for, One through Five.
Mm-hmm.
Then we went last year from, to K to Four. And now, we're focusing, uh, the EBL dollars are gonna be focused solely on K through Two. And that is a very significant change, in my opinion, and something that I think we should, um, just be kind of keeping our eye on.
Yes, yes.
In terms of literacy for the Third and Fourth Graders.
One of the reasons that we, but our EBL dollars are less this year than they were last year. Our EBL dollars.
That seems like a relevant data point.
It, it is a significant data point. Um, we still have intervention dollars, but our EBL dollars are, have been decreased for this school year. So, we have to reapply for the grant funding, uh, each cycle. And we ended a cycle last year. And so, we were not sure that it would even be offered from the state. So, we reapplied once it was offered. And now, those dollars have, have decreased. So, we are using those dollars, but using them very strategically. Uh, in, in preschool through Second Grade, we're teaching students how to learn. And so, to concentrate on those, uh, grade levels, the kindergarten through Second Grade, teaching our students how to learn. When they get to Third Grade, it is then using what they've learned about how to read, um, and applying that. So, it's two different kinds of strategies. So, it is prudent to, um, concentrate those limited dollars right there at those early stages where we're teaching the students how to read.
I appreciate you, Ms. Bushing and Ms. Harris and Ms. Davis for coming. And thank you so much for your presentation and for your hard work.
Thank you.
Um, and does anybody else have any more questions or comments? Mr. Bryant?
Just have a comment. Um, just wanna thank you all for the wonderful presentation, um, the dedication and commitment of the teachers. I know it's not easy, but I can certainly tell in your voices the passion that you all have for this program. And I'm sure the children are benefiting from your wonderful teaching. Reading is a passion for me. I love reading. And, um, it's great continuing to do the good, good work. And hopefully, we'll be able to get more funding.
Yes.
To expand it again. So, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, Ms. Thacker has been able to rally.
Yay!
The videos. So, we're going to take a moment and watch them.
Perfect. So, this one, I just wanna share with you sort of the background behind this. I thought this was the great, uh, way to end this. But I think this student from Jackson Villa, um, just encapsulates the joy of reading. And this is a student who her mother actually videotaped it and sent it to her EBL teacher at night. Um, and it's, she's reading a book that she selected from Scholastic for the first time for her mother. And so, you'll notice like she's working on her expression, her prosody. She just has such, you know, enthusiasm for reading it. You'll just love it. So, we'll end on this note.
Volume in here? Volume in.
So, you can tell already.
Just watch her expressions. It's great. Even though, just imagine what she's saying and watch her expressions.
Well, she has her famous, her favorite blankie, so that's.
There you go. Oh, my gosh.
I can actually hear it through here, but, yeah.
The microphone to your mic.
We could, um, I mean, it's so limited though. I can barely hear it.
I don't even know where the wire is. Let's see. You know where the wire is. You're awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you see it?
You're carrying it out of the computer.
Yeah.
There's no option.
There's no option.
How about we just move it over and just put the mic there?
Ah, good.
Will that work?
Should I share my ice cream?
Can you guys hear that?
Maybe, maybe not. Should I share my ice cream? Ice cream? Maybe, maybe not. Should I share my ice cream? I'm gonna skip that thing. Ice cream. Ice cream, ice cream, yes. Ice cream. Get your ice cream for a hot day. Yum. Oh, boy. Ice cream? Hee-hee. Want ice cream, please? Here you go. Oh, boy, oh, boy. I love ice cream. Wait, Piggy loves ice cream too. Piggy is my best friend. Share, should I share my ice cream with her?
Isn't that so cute? I just love when she like laughs at herself reading. Um, but again, I think that encapsulates the joy and the motivation and just the confidence that our students have in EBL. So, thank you so much for allowing us to come speak with you tonight. And we will look forward to maybe sharing out some great data next year too, as well. Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison, Ms. Bushing. Um, okay. So, then the next item we have on our agenda is the 2019-2020 Enrollment Update by Ms. Powell.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Atkins. Is this, am I okay about volume-wise this time?
Okay. I'll, I'll hear it otherwise.
Okay, great. So, just to give you an update of where we are on what we call the 10-day enrollment. This is not our official fall number that's reported to the state. That doesn't occur until September 30th. But the 10-day, which was close of school yesterday, um, comparing that to the 10-day the prior year, we are down 43 students compared to the 10-day last year. Um, primarily, where we're seeing this is in the elementary levels. Uh, Greenbrier was surprised, has been surprisingly down this year, although they are seeing a steady increase and are projecting continued slow but steady increase in the coming weeks based on the communications they're having with families. Um, I have some specifics on that from Pat. Um, the middle years were basically flat and Charlottesville High School is up 32. Again, this is comparing what we call the 10-day to the 10-day. So, it is not the final story. Um, it is within, it's actually three over what we projected in total, which was 4307. If you look back at the January, um, work session, the number's 4307 for K-12. But there are some ups and downs in places that we didn't expect, such as Greenbrier. Um, the, on here for your reference, um, is just a continuation of showing you what that actual September 30th number has been and what that's looked like year to year. That's the fall membership number that you can find on the VDOE website. Ooh. So, page down did not do what I expected. It didn't go to the next slide. Sorry, Leslie. Can you get me to the next slide? There we go. So, this is a look at, um, class sizes and where we stand. And the good news is, um, we are, last year at this time, we were looking at some really tight, tight situations at Burley Moran and. tight situations at Burnley Moran and at Greenbrier. This year, we are not looking at those same kind of tight, uncomfortable situations. If you look at these school by school, the max is noted kind of in the right corner, and that's a state, that's the state specified maximum. Locally, we try to do better than that, but you can see then at the bottom what the actual class sizes are, again, based on 10-day. So Burnley Moran, you can see, is in much better shape and having some room to breathe as compared to last year. Clark, which has a lower maximum, these maximums, by the way, are tied to the poverty level for the school. It's not something discretionary that we set when it comes to these state specified maximums, and we are held accountable to these with some reporting that we do each fall to the state. So you can see Clark, Greenbrier, again, Greenbrier has, is seen, we did transfer one teacher from Greenbrier to Johnson because Johnson was having some tight grade levels there. If we go to the next page. Jackson Villa is in good shape, and we're holding there. We did not hire any additional teachers for Jackson Villa. Johnson, we did transfer one from Greenbrier, and their numbers are good. Their maximum is 22. Jackson Villa is 21. And then Venable, which has an allowance for up to 24, their numbers are also, they're okay. They're good. They've got first grade at 23, but other than that, they're in a good spot.
So you guys are not making any recommendations, for example, to hire another teacher or anything? And all the class sizes look really good.
Yeah, we're, it's, we don't have any of the same holding our breath that we did at the elementary level last year. Of the two additional elementary positions that were approved in the budget, we only hired one, and we held off on the other because the kindergarten enrollments were looking slow.
Right.
And that ended up being the right thing to do. And between that and being able to shift people around, we did one shift within Clark. We had to move a teacher, I believe, from first to kindergarten. So those are the types of things that we deal with over the summer to make sure that we do end up in, with appropriate class sizes and do the best we can to have our class sizes not only comfortably below the state maximums, but also in line with what we want to do as a community.
Ms. McKeever.
Ma'am.
Also, the largest difference that we see in enrollment year-to-date is at Greenbrier, and that's 30 students. What has, we believe, is happening is in the Mickey Drive area. We've seen a number of our ELL families have moved out, but there are a number of families that are moving in now. We understand that IRC has notified us that there are a number of other families that are coming in. Greenbrier has also been notified that several families are out of the country. So there's somewhere around 15, 20 families could be coming in very soon into the school, so that would balance that out, that drop that we've seen in their enrollment. And also-
The fourth grade cohort is huge at Greenbrier.
It is. At Burnley Moran, we see their numbers have dropped 22, but that is reflected in a number of variance requests that we received for students to transfer over to Venable, and we honor those requests. So we've seen a shift in students transferring over to Venable from Burnley Moran.
That's an interesting, good point. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Powell? Thank you, as ever. The magic of the enrollment projections is so just outside of my purview. It's really impressive how you come so close every year, so-
This is a little closer than I believe Dr. Atkins would like me to come.
Exactly.
So we're going to work on that.
Well, thank you, and if anybody else have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell.
Okay. So that, those are all the items for discussion. Right now, we have another opportunity for comments from the members of our community. If anybody would like an opportunity to speak, you may approach the, the lectern? The podium, the podium. And state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Anybody like to? Okay. Yes. State your name and address. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Chris Meyer, 124 Oklon Court. My son is a first grader at Jackson Villa. I was, I was a little dismayed to see that he is in the one section that is over by maybe some percentages, but-
It's really hard for me to hear you, so if you'd like to speak more directly into the mic?
Okay, sorry. I was a little disappointed to see that he's in the one cohort in the elementary school at Jackson Villa that is over the maximum, but I'm assuming that's going to be fixed. My observations are, and I guess a little concerned after not hearing a discussion or observations by any of the school board members around the SOL scores that have unfortunately been going down over the years. I think you're all, of course, aware of those, and while I don't think they should be the only criteria that we consider on how we're doing and how the board's doing and how the division's doing, it is an important one. And everything except mathematics has gone down over the last three years, and just this last year went up one point. So I'd like to point that out, and I'm wondering if the board members would have observations, and also, of course, maybe the superintendent, on what's happening there. Additionally, the black students as a cohort have gone down significantly over the last two years, 16 and 18 school year years. All of their thematic areas have gone down. I'm wondering what the school board is going to be doing about that? I'm wondering what the school's going to be doing about that? And I'd like to hear some answers. Thanks.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Great. Just to clarify for Mr. Meyer, the October meeting is when we discuss the SOL scores and what we have on a routine basis. So that's when you'll be hearing more about our SOL scores. And hearing no further comments, we'll go to the next comments from the board. So I will start this time for Ms. Torres. I think I've said anything?
I just wanted to mention one thing, the student, school board rep, surprisingly, not really, he had to go early, so he, I'm sure would have loved to have made some comments, but he had to leave early. So I just wanted to acknowledge him and thank him for staying as long as he did. Ms. Torres?
I'm fine. Thank you.
I just want to add, I forgot for the announcements that we have been invited by the, I forgot the name of it, but it's like a bully summit on September the 14th by the Muslim Students Association. I wish I remembered the exact name, but it's going to be at their mosque, and I think the several of us are planning to go, and so I was delighted to get the invitation from, for the school board to attend, so I'm looking forward to hearing what they have to say and how we, anything that we can do as a school board, as a system, to address their concerns.
Thank you for that. Ms. Perier?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Bryant? And Mr., oh, wait, do you have some? I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming out to tonight's meeting. Just a few things that I had attended since our last board's meeting. On August 20th, I was invited by the City of Promise along with several members of African-American males, along with Daniel Farley, the African-American community at the Common House, to discuss ways how we could help and assist the City of Promise, whether it be serving as a mentor or coming in and giving inspirational speeches to the students. Mrs. Mary Coleman and Daniel looking for ways for people in the community to assist in working with those students in the 10th and Page Street area. It was a productive meeting. A lot of folks attending had good ideas and good comments. Also during that meeting, the SOL scores came up during that meeting as well. So as Ms. McKeever said, we'll be discussing that in our October meeting. So if there are members of the community, African-American males who are interested in mentoring, if you can't mentor one-on-one, or just sign up to volunteer, come in and give an inspirational speech, please reach out to Ms. Mary Coleman or Mr. Daniel Farley at the City of Promise. Ms. Mary Coleman is at the City of Promise. Also, on Saturday, August 17th, I was invited along with Mr. Chambers, I think, teaches PEA at Clark-
Burnley Moran.
Burnley Moran, to the Democratic Breakfast. A small group of us who convened at the Gordon Avenue Library, and they gave me an opportunity to practice and to answer questions from the reporters and people in attendance at that particular meeting. Also, on August 14th, opening school convocation, I had a blast in serenading all of our teachers and staff members, and we had a lot of fun at the opening convocation. It sort of set the tone for the school year, and each year, I thank Dr. Atkins for asking me to sing and to serenade our teachers. I have lots of fun in doing that. And certainly from what I'm hearing in the community, all have gotten off to a great Also, I'm not finished. I'm still reviewing my notes here. I also want to congratulate the board for recognizing the Charlottesville 12 with the proclamation. Many of those students, many of those students who are members of the Charlottesville 12, I know personally, so I'm sure they are honored and gracious that we have honored them with a proclamation while they're still able to smell their flowers. Also, Ned, I wanted to, I was sitting there doing some research on your father, and I realized that when he was appointed to the board, it was in 1965, and I was in the fifth grade, and the schools were still segregated, and he led the charge to integrating our schools and adding kindergarten, because I don't remember going to kindergarten, I just remember when I turned six years old, off to first grade I went. There was no kindergarten back then that I can recall, other than private homes. So, and also, he went on to serve with honor in our, in the House of Delegates. So certainly, I want to recognize your father's outstanding service to this community and to our school system.
Thank you very much.
And also, Dr. Atkins, I want to congratulate you on your appointment. Governor Northam, his appointment for you to serve on that commission board, and I wish you lots of luck with that. And also Zion and Bryant for being appointed by the governor to serve on another commission advisory board. So congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mickey?
Thank you, James, for that, about my father. And speaking of him, and as we're moving into this time where we're really trying to get investments into our school buildings themselves, and the city has committed, thankfully, $3 million to do some planning about creating a true middle school and cutting down on transition by doing that, and also creating a centralized and expanded preschool that, as we know, these are big moves, big building moves that just need to be made. Our city hasn't invested in our school system. Our buildings have been well-maintained, but they're not modernized buildings. And the last building was 1974 CHS that we're sitting in, and that's a long time ago now, having graduated in '78. Anyway, so we ought to, you know, I hope we're, as a community, going to seize this opportunity with the city investing in plans, but it's going to be a big dollar figure that we have to come up with. And going over, because of recent events, my, some articles about my father, I came across this one that interested me, both because it bragged on my father, but also, I think you'll hear something interesting here. This was when he won his title landslide Mickey by winning by one vote in 1970, but it says, in this last paragraph, says, "Mickey is an attorney and a five-year member of the Charlottesville School Board. He was credited with a major role in the passage of a recent school bond issue by Charlottesville voters." And this is something that we've tossed around in the past, that the cities aren't required to do bond issues like counties are when they go into significant debt. But the city apparently can do that, and they apparently did do that then, and-
Is that for the high school?
Well, it was for, they're planning the high school, they built Jackson Villa, they built K-Tech, they built kindergarten, and, you know, the community can do big things if they put their mind to it, and it seems to me like a bond issue may be the way to go, to put it out there and let the public decide. It may require some bit of a tax increase, but let the public decide if they want a modernized school system or not. And so it seems like the time has come to invest in schools, and I hope we keep the momentum going. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mickey. I will reserve my comments and go back to, go to the next item on the agenda, superintendent's comments.
Are you doing it as actor?
I will reserve them when I have something very interesting to say.
I'm going to your seat.
Dr. Atkins? Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know.
Is it out of order?
Uh-huh.
Oh, it's just not loaded.
So you just follow me?
Yeah, I'll follow your verbally.
Okay, that's fine. I'll use this one.
What's wrong?
I'm sorry, my computer's just taking a little while to load. Thank you. I have it. Thank you. I have it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to mention with our SOL test scores, there are two times that the state reports the SOL test scores. The first one comes out in August, last part of August, and those are our raw test scores. Those are the ones that we are, the state is required to file with the federal government. So those particular test scores that come out in the paper and are published first are not the test scores that the state uses in order to award schools accreditation. So when those scores come out in the paper, they have not factored in any growth that our students have made, which the state factors in growth for students. It hasn't factored in any of the other parameters in which the state uses to calculate the test scores. So I just want to make sure we make a distinction between the two. What we will bring to our board in October will be our, the calculations that are from the state for accreditation purposes, and those scores do look different from the scores that are in the paper. So we are looking forward to bringing that before the board in October. Also, August the 6th, we had the pleasure of having First Lady Northam to visit Charlottesville, and she visited Barrett's Early Learning Center, and it was a pleasure to go there with her. Barrett's actually received a preschool development grant, and in that grant, it was funding to help them to reach all of the milestones that we would want a childcare facility to reach in order to make sure that they're providing the highest level quality of care for our preschoolers. And in the most recent review, Barrett's scored higher than any of the other preschool centers that receive the grant funding, so congratulations to them, and we appreciate Governor, First Lady Northam coming to visit to acknowledge the accomplishments at Barrett. Also, we did have a fun time at the United Way Community Table. It was an opportunity to pull the community together to have some very difficult conversations around race, around equity, around affordable housing, and at each of our tables, the community table members at each table had a discussion about what was our role individually, and how could we leave the table and continue to have an impact- to have an impact on our community and those issues that are so near and dear to our hearts. Our convocation this year was filled with a lot of energy. It was fun having many members of our community present at convocation. We thank Ms. Perier for bringing remarks, and we certainly thank Mr. Bryant for being there and serenading us and singing. The teachers appreciated so much having the city manager and the mayor to be present on stage, and we missed Ms. McKeever, she was on vacation, one that had been planned a long time before convocation. So we appreciate all of your warm wishes for us. But it was very nice to have our city manager and mayor, and they brought greetings to the teachers. I got many comments about how much our teachers and staff appreciated having Mayor Walker and our city manager, Dr. Richardson, present to acknowledge their hard work and acknowledge the task that's ahead of them. There was lots of laughter, and we warmly welcomed all of our new staff, and especially our new administrators. It was a lot of fun for everyone. Congratulations to all of the Shannon Grant winners. We had a number of winners this year from various schools. We received grants totaling somewhere around $20,000, so we were excited. We had Peter Davis and Christie Scott, Matt Shields, and Carl Hemstetler from Charlottesville High School. They received a grant for Harnessing the Wind. Caitlin Ray, again, from Charlottesville High School, received a grant for Hands-On Science for All. Brian Getty from Clark Elementary School, he received a grant for School Meteorology Team. Jason Lauer from Greenbrier, solar panel, electric cars. And then Jennifer Tindall and Jackie Dinsmore. Elizabeth Jones from Jackson-Vaya received a grant for Ears Up for Series Reading. So congratulations to all of our teachers who submitted grants, and congratulations to all of them for receiving those grants. Back-to-school bash, we again, this year, thank the community members who so generously give us funding in order to be able to give out backpack and back-to-school supplies to students. This year, at the back-to-school bash, over 1,000 backpacks were handed out to students. Lots of excitement. We thank and acknowledge the African-American Pastoral Council. They start working from the moment we complete one back-to-school bash. They immediately process what has, what worked and what didn't work, and they go into planning for the upcoming school year. So thank you to all of the participants and the generous donations from our community. During our pre-service week, we had a number of very engaging workshops for our teachers. One that was very engaging and was presented individually to our schools was Equity Data Takeaways, Equity Talks at our schools. Dr. Williams from the University of Virginia has been working with our administrators and now working with our teachers, and he visited each school individually and worked with each individual staff discussing equity. This will be ongoing professional development that will be happening throughout our school year. So thank you to all of our teachers. Even now, there are many courageous conversations going on in our schools about equity and about each of our responsibilities and who we are and who, how do we perceive ourselves where equity is concerned? Because we have to understand who we are and our perceptions first before we can help change our culture and our environment. So thank you to all of our teachers and staff for the difficult conversations that are going on. We're all in this together. And walking into our schools, I believe there is a difference that you can absolutely feel. I've been receiving a number of comments from our parents as they're going into school. They can feel the synergy, and they can feel the movement forward where equity is concerned. Lots of back-to-school events have taken place. We welcomed a number of new teachers. Here's a beautiful picture of all of our new teachers together, just a very exciting group of teachers. We have a number of the teachers who are actually the sons and daughters of teachers who are in our school system now, and that's exciting. We also have a number of our teachers who graduated from Charlottesville High School. They have come back home to be a part of our classrooms. So, and we have a number of teachers that we offered early contracts a year ahead of them coming in this year. And we have about 32% of the teachers that we hired were, this year, African-American teachers. So we have a very diverse group of new staff members coming on, new teachers, and we welcome all of them to Charlottesville City Schools. We're looking forward to an exciting year. And you can tell from this picture, they were very relaxed, having fun, and getting to know one another. We've had a number of school visits on the first day of school. It was really nice going to the schools and seeing teachers in action and starting the teaching and learning process immediately from the moment the students walked into, actually, the moment they got off of the school bus. That was exciting. We also went out to some of the bus stops in the afternoon so that we could see our students getting off of the buses and also engage with some of our families. I had the pleasure of going to the University of Virginia on grounds and being at the International Residence College Fellows Reception, where the university welcomes students from many different countries. Many of these students who are in IRC at the University of Virginia will end up coming to Charlottesville City Schools to volunteer in our classrooms, to engage with students who may come to us from IRC, the International Refugee Center. And they will help students to make transitions in our school system, just as the university is helping them to make a transition there at the university. So it was a pleasure to go over and meet some of those young people and to know that very soon they will be volunteering in our schools. I had the pleasure of attending a film by Lorenzo Dickerson. He has done another amazing job in producing a film called Best Seats in the House. And we had a number of our community members who were highlighted in the film, and it was a discussion around segregation at our movie theaters. So it was a very nice film. We had Ms. Perier there, and Mr. Bryant, and I'm sure many other, Ms. Torres, and many other members of our school community were there. It was a very moving film. So if it's shown again, I would encourage everyone to, if you can get a seat in the house, please go in and watch the film. What was so interesting at the end of the film is the community members that were highlighted realized that although they could not sit downstairs in the theater, because of segregation, they had to go upstairs. This light bulb went on, actually, they were the best seats in the house during that time. It felt like something was being taken away. It was just the mere fact that you couldn't choose where you were sitting. But in hindsight, there's a little smile about it, just to know that now you have to pay probably twice as much to sit in those seats as you do sitting down on the floor. So thank you to Lorenzo Dickerson for all of his hard work in capturing those moments. We've had some bus stop meet and greets. Thank you to our student and family engagement staff, Bianca and Velvet Coleman. I followed them around with Mr. Henderson to the bus stops and seen, I spoke with our students early in the mornings. It's amazing how energetic our students are when they're at the bus stop. The three young men who are featured here, two of them attend Walker and one goes to Buford. So I asked the students what were their favorite subjects in school, and two of them told me math, and the other one told me reading. And they were very excited. They were very excited about Walker and Dr. Hastings and his different tennis shoes.
Oh, yeah, he's got a lot.
They were pretty excited about that. Also, the student from Buford was very excited about Dr. Turner, and they get a kick out of seeing Dr. Turner in his bow ties. So both schools have something that really engages and calls the students. It was a pleasure being there with Velvet and Bianca. We were there also again this morning at the bus stop. We were in Prospect, and it was great being there. And we're kicking off, we kicked off this morning at that bus stop attendance. September is Attendance Recognition Month. So we talked to our students about how important it is that they attend school each day and how important it is that they attend school and come in on time. So we're going to be sending some notices and some just friendly reminders home to our families about how important getting students into school on time. We've interviewed several of our students to ask them, what do they like about school? And they tell us about the early morning sessions that they have in their classrooms and how they engage with their peers early in the mornings and get their breakfast, and how important school is to them. So if you go to our social media sites tomorrow, I think the family engagement team, they're planning to post some of those responses from students, so you'll see what students have to say about attending school and how important it is that they attend each day and attend on time. So our motto for attendance is, "The attendance today will reflect your achievement tomorrow." So attendance is very important. I want to also recognize Mr. McKee's father, Mr. Thomas Johnson-Mckee, and all of the work and dedication from him to the Charlottesville community, his efforts around equity and civil rights and desegregation of schools. It's, when you're in the middle of the work, it seems like it's just, I'm sure to him, a load that was heavy to carry, but he kept moving forward and kept working towards making those changes. And when we look back now, we can see just how impactful his work and his words were. So thank you, Mr. McKee, and thank you to your father for everything that he did to get us, helped to get us to this point. We really appreciate it. And congratulations also to Zion O'Brien. I was very excited to see that she has been appointed by Governor Northam to the African-American Advisory Committee. So she will actually be sitting on a committee that will provide advice to the governor. And that advice, I'm sure, will be around equity, around race relations, and any other areas that the governor would ask questions about and seek their advisement. So congratulations to Zion for being appointed to that role. It's very exciting to see a student who has been here in our high school and taken such an active role in advocacy in Charlottesville City to move on to the collegiate level, and then to be recognized, not only at her university for the work that she's done, but to continue to be recognized throughout the Commonwealth and beyond for that work. So congratulations, and we know that she will do well and will be a great and important voice for the governor to hear. So congratulations to her. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
Just one quick thing about Ms. Bryant, the university working group that I was co-chair of, she is going to, we're continuing our effort, and the president of the university has asked her to serve as the University of Virginia student rep because the student rep we had graduated, and so she's on that group as well. And so that is really going to have a tremendous impact on the university's footprint here in Charlottesville. So her input already, I've been in meetings with her, has been tremendous. So I'm looking forward to serving with her on that committee.
I'm Zion. I would just like to note that there's a lot of work also, so don't forget to study. Don't let all these people take all your time.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever.
But thank you also for your commitment to our community and our Commonwealth. It's really important. So thank you for mentioning that.
Ms. McKeever, I'd also like to say thank you to President Jim Ryan. Not only has he been very active in our community, but he's made a special effort to reach out to different members of the community to get their input, to actually seek how the University of Virginia might forge a stronger partnership with the community and with our school system. Mayor Walker and I had a meeting with President Ryan on yesterday, and it was an engaging conversation. It was an important conversation, and I just say thank you to him for having that dialogue and for being so interested in making sure that we have a strong community and that we're connected as a community.
Dr. King, do we have any work session wrap-up? And the upcoming meetings, one moment. Our next meeting, I think, is on October 3rd here at 5:00, is our next regularly scheduled meeting. And that is all the business that I have, and hearing no objections, we stand adjourned.